The special meeting of the Wallingford Inland Wetlands and Waters Commission on Monday, November 18th at 7:00 PM is called to order. Time is 7:00 PM. You join me for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full call. Michael Kerber, Senator.
Eilidh Keane.
David Perrin.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Before we begin, this is a special meeting of the Inland Wetlands and Waters Commission, and the purpose is to have a hearing to consider the suspension or revocation of permit, IWWC 19-3.7988, East Center Street Benchmark Land Development, and the calling of bond for the same application, Benchmark Land Development. Before we begin, the environmental planner has provided us all with a memo which we have not had the opportunity to read. And it's important that we do so in order to understand where we are and have better knowledge so that we can conduct this hearing properly. So without any further ado. Is there a copy of that available?
Uh, please hold on.
Thank you.
No, you don't have it, Dennis. I just typed it two minutes ago.
Oh, okay.
And David Lord, there's another copy if David Lord wants it.
Take a side, we've got enough. One minute. Got any more? No. Got some more? That's it.
Thank you. Um, no, I gotta, sorry, I gotta hold on to mine.
Let's see, this last one. I'll give it to John. Thank you.
When we're done, if you just sound indicates, I'll know. We've both had a chance to read it, but I would like our environmental planner just to highlight what's important, and I think we had a few typos we wanted to point out.
Yeah, I'd like to deal with typos first, because I was typing as fast as I could just before the meeting. So on page two of my, the environmental planner's report, I just handed out a dated November 18th, on page two, second paragraph, in the middle of that second paragraph, to the delay in removal of the fill that was, that should be explicitly, not applicating, that should say was explicitly ordered. And then, then the last sentence should be, "This office signed off on the grading on," that should be September 25. So, and I'll continue, September 25, so 30 days would have been October 25. It's September 25 instead of August 28? Yes.
Yeah. No.
So 30 days would have been October 25.
October, right. That's September.
Oh, that's my new, I was just filling it in so I could finish typing. I just looked it up just now, so that's what the correct date would be on that. Okay, so those are the three titles. Oh, corrections. All right, tonight I sat down and did this environmental planner's report because this is confusing, it was very confusing to me what we are about to do in this hearing. So if it was confusing to me, I thought it might be confusing to other people, so I laid it out, sort of, you know, I hope I laid it out right in here, what has transpired since our November 6 meeting. And Eilidh was not there at the
I was not there.
November 6, but the other three commissioners were at the November 6 meeting. And you recall, we took, the commission voted. The votes that we were taking is on the second stapled page here. We took four votes. Let me just say what the four votes were. Vote that the notice of violation be kept in effect. Second one was vote that the notice of violation be placed on the land records. Third one, vote that the permit be revoked. Fourth one, vote to call the bond. So those were the four actions taken. Now, at that meeting on November 6, the chairman had the presence of mind to set the hearing within 10 days, so that's what this, the notice I was directed to send out, the order on November 8, which it went out by certified mail to the owner, applicant, violator, and so the hearing telling him, the hearing was set for November 18, and giving him a copy of the actions that were taken. And so here we are. Since then, I didn't get a chance to send a memorandum to the law department, as I was directed to do, to make sure, to get her opinions on all, so much activity happened with those four votes, to make, I wanted to know what she thought about that, and how, I was looking for guidance on how to proceed at this hearing, but I was also directing her at that time to place the notice on the land records. I thought that would be a very straightforward thing to do. However, her response, which is stapled on here, really, this actually surprised me, and that's why tonight I'm going to recommend, as I put in my report, to reiterate placing the notice of violation on the land records. That it was the Corporation Council's opinion that we can put the notice on the land records, except we just have to beef up the order a little bit. So I put in here some language for that order. That's what the language is on the top of page two, if you want to pursue that. As far as pursuing
What, I'm sorry?
On the top of my page two of my planner's report, I talk about how if the, that the commission should go ahead and affirm the order and put it on the land records. Where I have the typos. It's in that paragraph where I have the typos. So later on, we can do that. Also, she had several opinions about how dealing with the revoking the permit and calling the bond. The commission put the cart ahead of the horse a little bit, in that you can't just go ahead and revoke a permit after all the, a hearing first and consider revoking the permit. So that's what we're doing tonight. And we already had this set up, this hearing set up, so it worked out fine. This is the hearing where the commission gets to consider revoking that bond officially, and to make it stick, if they choose to do so. The Corporation Council, if you read her letter, she feels that the commission should not go ahead and do that. She feels the commission, and she gives all the reasons, should hold off until the spring on that. Her reasons aren't biological, her reasons are legal. She feels, and this was a learn curve for me, that when the commission wants something done, they should order a person, an owner, a contractor, whatever it is, order them to do it. Not suggest that they do it, not beg them to do it, not desire them to do it. So we, the words that were used on several occasions were apparently not strong enough, and so we're here to look at, consider all this. And of course, the permitee slash violator gets a chance, this is a hearing for them to talk to, so they will be presenting tonight as well.
Next one. Mr. Sandoval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For your record, my name is Dennis Sandoval. I'm an attorney with the Sandoval Law Firm, and represent the owner and applicant Benchmark Land Development. One of the representatives of that company is here. Also with me tonight is David Lord, who is the author of the mitigation report that became part of your order on the June 2019 meeting. That's the whole reason, I think, that we're here. David's here to talk a little bit about the plantings, and why they haven't been completed by October 15, which is the end of the planting season. I want this to be very professional, although I'll tell you, it does boil my blood when I read the environmental planner's report, and it's filled with errors and conclusions. It's really a very poorly drafted document, which again, I just had the opportunity to see right now. But let me say this, the notice for tonight, the notice for tonight's hearing is to determine whether or not the permit should be suspended or revoked. It has nothing to do with a notice of violation, this is with the permit that was granted in June of 2019. Additionally, it's not a public hearing. It's a hearing that's scheduled pursuant to your rules, has for the applicant to address whether or not there is cause to revoke or suspend the permit. As Attorney Small has indicated pretty clearly in her memo, I had the opportunity to talk to her before it was drafted, just to express my misgivings and concerns about what had happened. And my suspicions are that, of course, this commission got sort of riled up by the planner, the environmental planner, where there really is no cause to be riled up. My client has paid all of their professionals to do all of the work that was in Mr. Lord's mitigation plan. He's paid for everything. He's paid for the installation of the catch bases, which are there. He's paid for the piping, which is there. He's paid for the removal of the stone in the wetland areas, that area behind the barn, which is gone. And now you have lush lawn back there, nicer than my lawn. The only work that's not been completed is the installation of the plants. Not because of some devious design, some nefarious idea that somehow thumbed his nose at the commission, it's because the contractor, Mr. Lord, couldn't set up the times to get that work completed. As you notice, again, with some of the corrected dates in the report, the grading plan was approved in August, in September, rather. There was not enough time to get the plants ordered and planted before the October 15 date. The October 15 date is in David Lord's original plan that you approved. This commission, as Attorney Small points out, did not put any dates in your orders. We did represent, we'd get it done as quickly as possible. My client wants it done, wanted it done, has made many calls to his contractor and to all of his professionals to get this work done. He's sick over, or they're sick over the fact that this hasn't been done, because it's something that they've committed to, but it's not their fault. Again, I've got, and I sent information to the environmental planner before your November meeting, from the contractor, I'll offer it again tonight, Mr. Chairman, you may have not seen it at the meeting, that said that the contractor's been paid, all the plants have been paid, they're just waiting to get the work completed. Contractor CNC excavating, Michael Camerata, was waiting to get in touch with Mr. Lord to get these things planted. Now, David has a report for you tonight, and he'll make his own presentation. Again, there's nothing nefarious, there's nothing where the applicant is trying to do something other than what was represented. Now, those representations are very important to the Palumbos. They were not an order that you entered, but that didn't matter. The work, he promised the work would be done, he represented the work would be done. Again, it's not part of your order. I'm sure you've read it, I've read it 10 times, and as Small's read it. The point, though, is, is that he hires professionals to do the work, the work wasn't all completed. Why would he do the most expensive part of the remediation and stop at the installation of the plants? Because he wanted to be funny? No. He's hired, he's paid for them. So I'll offer that as an exhibit, Mr. Chairman. He's paid for both the installation and for the plants themselves. I'll offer that, if I might, as an exhibit. So the question now becomes, if there was no date, as Attorney Small indicated in her memo, that is there some damage, is there risk to the wetlands? And I'm gonna have David Lord opine on that, because my understanding is that the wetlands are reaching their state of dormancy, and that the work will be done as soon as the weather breaks. That's why I think Attorney Small's recommended May 20 as the date for the installation of the plantings, which seems to make sense, it's something that, again, she discussed with me, and I thought was fair and reasonable. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to David Lord.
No, just a question.
Sure.
This thing was approved on June 5, and as approved, I think this violation had continued for more than a year before we could finally get to where we were on June 5. And everything was supposed to be done by the fall. That's three months. In fact, because the thing is, is June 5 was still in the spring. And so now you had from June 5 until September 20, which had been the fall, and in three months, your client was unable to get it done. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, when you say that Ms. O'Hair in November riled up the war, may assure you, sir, she did not. She reported to me, her conversation to you, and where you did recite it, and correctly stated that you, all the plants had been paid for. But at this point, the commission, and what commission I'm saying, the, you know, as part of this, said, you know, that the applicant just does not, just seems to fail to keep his promises. And that's why we took the action that we did, we said, we need to start enforcing our rights, we need to start protecting the wetlands. And these four actions that we took are the actions that we felt were proper. So there's nothing, you know, we're not doing this because Erin stirred us up. There may be, she has pointed out some inaccuracies in her own report, which happens, we can agree with that. So we get to the point, which this hearing would determine, is whether or not you did the job or not.
Well, the vast majority of the work that was important to the remediation of the wetlands is complete.
We accept that statement, but the whole thing, but the permit was for everything that, and that permit was supposed to be done. And again, we did not, we will, we did not give you an absolute date by which you had to have everything finished, and we recognize that. But unless there's some miracle that happened between 5 o'clock and now, that work is not done, and as a practical matter, it cannot be done until May 20. I mean, is that correct?
I think that's accurate, and David Lord will opine to that, but, you know, you're talking about the wintertime now, you could put plants in, but be foolish to do so.
Well, I'm finally glad we got a, we finally got a, you know, I dropped that date on planning, and it's not October 15. Okay, which is now going on, so we can't go back any further. Commissioner, Mr. Kern.
Yeah, I have something to say. My understanding is that Erin went beyond the call of duty a number of times to get ahold of all of you, not just you yourself, but Palumbo, Mr. Lord, with emails or phone calls, whatever. There was no response. That's what upset me was because, all you do is tell us, hey, it's changed from not gonna do it till May, or, you know, the guy's dragging his feet because he can't get there to the shrubs. But just to point blank not respond to her, because if you don't respond to her, then she responds to us. There's no conversation, there's no communication. So what could have been all done, and I don't understand why you pay the guy before he puts the shrubs and the trees in. Does it make sense? You think he'd wanna get them in the fall season so that they can dormant themselves, so the spring will be hardy. Now he's gonna put them in the spring, and God knows what's gonna happen through the summer if we don't have a wet spring. You know, there's a challenge behind the whole thing here. So that's what frosted me, was because I'm saying, what we should have done was sent her an email saying, hey, this is what happened, here's where we're going.
It's a fair comment. All I can tell you is that I'm not, I'm not on their payroll all the time. I represent them in front of this commission, I represent them in front of other commissions, but I don't represent them post approvals, that I'm on to another file and doing something else. So when Erin called, I politely told her that I was not still engaged to do work on this wetlands application, but I'd be happy to communicate that. I think that the issue, and David's here to talk about David Lord, there was some difficulty coalescing on dates between the contractor and Mr. Lord to get the work done. That really was what it was. Now, why there wasn't communicated there, I don't know. But I think there had been a casual meeting, a happenstance meeting with the chairman, and Mr. Palumbo indicated that he was having difficulty getting the work done, even though he'd already paid for it. And that's why he's here to talk about the fact that they've already done that. I mean, they're embarrassed, they're on the front page of the newspaper for something that they've paid professionals to do. You can imagine that side of it, too.
This one. Other questions from, can I just, at this point?
I don't
Okay, if I might, Mr. Chairman, this is Mrs. Palumbo, she might wanna mention just --
I don't recall Mrs. O'Hair ever calling the office and asking to talk to anybody.
I don't have your number, I don't have your office.
So you didn't, there was no contact?
Well, except by letters, notices, notices of violation.
Right.
These kind of, or approvals, or whatever. But I contacted, I, usually I go through folks' attorney, when I'm used to, I was dealing with Attorney Sandoval, and so when I start dealing with attorney, I tend to keep on dealing with the attorney, to see a project through. So I did that, and I also called David Lord, got his machine, you know. But can I clarify something?
Sure.
Or ask for clarification? Attorney Sandoval, you said that the wetland commission did not provide a date for the plantings? I don't know what you mean. The violation letter that went out October 15, the action that was taken on October 2nd, the commission voted that the notice of violation remains in effect, and the commission desires the planting done by fall, and the sand around the tree be removed. The sand is gone from around the tree, that's good. But there's fall, and that's not done by fall, it doesn't say October 3rd, or 10th, or whatever. The other clarification I understand--
Well, I'll answer that, do you want me to answer?
Well, okay, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, your attorney answered it, so I'll just take her words and read them back to you. It says in the October-November, October 15, 2019 NOV order, the commission advised the applicant that it desires the planting be done by fall. They should have ordered to do so. So the word that was chosen, I'm not sure by whom, that they desired, according to Attorney Small, is not a violation.
Right, but you said we didn't provide a date.
That's correct.
Well, fall is a timeframe. It's maybe not a specific date, but it's a timeframe.
Your attorney indicated you didn't order a date.
Oh, right, no, she says we need to use the word order. Correct, and not desire, I don't know why chairman's by tally said desire. But the other thing was the, I can't find it in this, you had a few minutes ago said that in this David Lord's report, it says October, planting should be installed by October--
Page six, come to page six. It's again at the bottom of page six.
Maybe a different copy.
I must.
It's not on my page six.
May 29, are you reading the May 29 report?
May 29.
Permanent vegetative cover may be established only during the normal growing season of April 15 through June 15, and August 15 through October 15.
All right, I have two, I'm sorry, I have two page sixes apparently, which is very curious, but I do, two different page sixes. But on the top of my second page six, yes, permanent vegetative cover, that's cover that refers to grass.
And then at the bottom of that page, it says, inspection dates will generally be seasonally adjusted based to conform on a growing season of April 15 through October 15. But again, I'm a lawyer--
Right, it doesn't say when he was gonna install the plants, I'm just pointing that out, it doesn't say we would install it by October 15.
It says the growing season, which was advised.
Well, that's, yeah, of course you wanna plant on the growing season. But then on page two, he talks that the plants will be done, compensatory mitigation shall be initiated within 30 days of the wetland approval. Now, we approved it on June 5. So compensatory mitigation--
All started, absolutely.
Shall be initiated.
90% of it is done.
And you guys did it, actually you did initiate.
That's right.
Approval, with final grading, blah blah, within 30 days of work commencement. So your final grading didn't happen by July 5, that'd be 30 days. It happened by September 20. When I went out there and I met the contractor in the field, not David, the grading contractor, and he said he was done, and I said, fine. I hadn't put in two more payments, but basically it was fine.
You know, I understand, is that we were all out there, men and women, as adults, and he was more than presentable what he wanted to do. He offered the day we were there at the site of investigation. I walked away saying, we didn't, I didn't want that much. I walked away saying, we didn't, I didn't want that much, I would have been happy with half of what he wanted to do. The rest of the commission felt so inclined that let's have him do this, because of the aesthetics. He wanted to be a good neighbor, this is what he wanted to do. This whole thing could have been avoided if somebody had contacted us and said, hey, we missed the planting season, we need to go here with it. Because if she had a letter, that this, we wouldn't be here now, and the thing would have been resolved till next May, or the planting season. David, it's really nothing, I can see that David needs to tell us. I mean, we can go by and look and see how, you know, how it's affected, how it's grabbed itself together, and it's aesthetic wise, it's, the wetlands there, everything's functioning right. So, I mean, I'll listen to the presentation, but one little letter or one email would have prevented this whole thing.
You know, and I do agree with it, and that's the, that's the sad part about it, yeah. And to some extent, the email from Mike Camerata was an attempt, was an attempt to sort of give you some clarity, maybe it wasn't clear enough, that, you know, the worksman paid for it, trying to get it done, it's just a question of scheduling, and that's why he said it was to wait till the spring, that was his email. And it wasn't enough. If, I think if the Plumbos said, no, that wasn't enough, something more was needed, we would have been happy to provide that. Because, again, there's no effort to ignore the commission. Why would you do 90% of the expensive work and just not do the planting? Doesn't make any sense. Especially when you've already hired the contractor, you paid them, maybe foolishly, you paid them, and now they're just waiting for the work to be done. So it's really coordination. I mean, part of it is that we just can't plant. We have to plant with David there. And that's the way the report was, that you guys approved in these. So we're subject to their coordination getting it done in order to meet the requirements of your decision, your direction.
So we stamp this as miscommunication on everybody's part?
Well, I can tell you, it's nothing intentional. This isn't an effort to say, we're just going to do things at our own pace. If we didn't have the money, we'd come and tell you. If it was something where we thought the plan was too generous, we'd come back and tell you. We've been, I think we've been communicating through the process. This was probably the time when there could have been more communication. Yeah, I agree with that.
All right. My understanding is, I think Erin said I was wrong, is that we asked you to do this and have this in place before you went to the next phase or the next step. And from what I saw on TV, the Planning and Zoning, or whoever was there, you're in front of them to get the next step started. Do you think it's fair that we, we should be able to let you go ahead and do that when you didn't move up to your word on this part, to go ahead and start the next part? I'm not the Planning and Zoning, so I have no say on it. I'm just, I'm a little gray about why this wasn't done, so you could just do your construction steps or your sequence in good faith so that the project went smoothly. To me, this is a snag or a stall, because if I was sitting on the Planning and Zoning Board, I'd say, no, you guys didn't do what you promised the Wetlands Commission. I mean, again, it goes to communication, because David or somebody should send to say, hey, we talked to Wetlands, they know we're not going to come in till next May, and we can go forward with it. So, again, it's communication.
Yeah, actually, and the planting plan for P and Z doesn't include this work. It's contemplated this is done as part of that, of these plants.
At this point, yeah, now you want to put out Mr. Lord?
Please.
Good evening. I don't have a lot to specifically talk about, but I do have a short handout to show.
Thank you.
I just want to keep one, and I'll give the rest to the board. I think one of the biggest miscommunications on my part and the like, Erin and I had a couple of phone calls about the plantings. Why aren't they going in? When are they going to go in? They can't go in because it's after the planting season. And we had some discussion about that. I have worked on a number of these projects where plants went in up to Thanksgiving. They can be done that way, but you stand the risk, and the landowner stands the risk of winter die-off and having to replant in the future. I may not have made it as clear as I should have to Erin. I said they could be done in October through into parts of November. But usually, and in my recommendation, unless it's strictly a wetland planting, I try not to do any upland planting after the 15th of October, because you're really potentially stressing the plants at that point in time. The plan is in place, the plant materials have been ordered, they're ready to be put in the ground as soon as the spring growing season starts. There's been no attempt to delay, there's no point in delaying the final parts of the work. Contractor did a beautiful job out there in creating just what we showed the commission as far as the mitigation plan. It's been vegetatively stabilized to overwinter. The ground cover out there is forming a nice dense root system and mat. I saw no evidence of erosion, sedimentation occurring out there. There's some photos from this afternoon attached to the report. The site is stabilized. We didn't get the trees and the shrubs and the emergence in place by the end of the fall growing season. And again, I would agree with the commissioner, it was a problem with miscommunication. We should have said upfront, it's too tight to the end of the planting season, some of the materials aren't available at this point, we could do part of the job, but we can't do all of the job based on the availability of plant materials. That happens at this time of the year. Because a lot of the stuff that's in my planting plan is used on all wetland mitigation plans, and that material gets used up. They don't have anymore that's not available until next growing season in 2020. Those are just some of the facts that we should have told the commission, should have relayed to the enforcement officer's office, so that they would be aware of what, where our status was with that.
Dave, you talk about the ability or availability of the product. In June, you knew what you wanted to do. You talked to us out there in the field about the trees and the plugs and that kind of deal. Isn't that when you look into your sources to make sure that you've got them available to do what you said you were going to do? Or do you wait a week before you're going to plan, or does the contractor...
No, I direct the contractor or the landowner, make sure that everybody has our planting plan. We had a pre-construction meeting that specified in my plan, all parties that had any part of the operation in establishing this measure were there in attendance. We talked about how it was going to proceed, the order, the sequence, and everything else. The plant materials, we specifically asked, are there going to be any, you know, are there any questions about what needs to be put in there, size, species, how alterations or substitutions can be made to that plant list that's in the plan? So all of that was done right upfront. I don't physically myself order plant materials. I leave that to the contractor, to the landowner, whoever's going to be in charge of actually putting those plants into the ground.
What percentage of this not availability would you say caused this delay, or caused this thing to slow down?
Well, I think it's not only percentage of unavailability, but it's, do we do part of the work now, or do we do a complete job? Because again, we're pushing it towards the end of when you really want to put these plants in the ground. So I think that's more the driving force with, you know, why we got to the point where we're at today. Because some of the material wasn't there, and a decision was made, and I can't tell you exactly who made that, but in discussion, it was, that's what the ultimate decision was, to wait until the spring. At that point, we have a much greater ability for sustained growth. We can put them in at the right time, the right soil conditions to put the plant in, less stress on the plants than if we put them in now under variable, it's kind of dry soil conditions and cold freeze thaw in the surface layers coming on at times now. So that's, okay, what we've got to end. To be honest with you, this particular issue has not really come up before. I think the problem was in the communication from our part to the enforcement officer's office. The, you know, we can't get the plantings done till it kicks over into next month, or next growing season, is generally just the way it's done. I have to admit that, we don't get in that point. And again, from, as much as I know, certainly from my perspective, but everything with the other consultants and the landowner, there's been no attempt at all to either delay or anything else, because as the attorney of San Viva has said, the majority of the work is done. The plant materials that are going to go in there, you're looking at maybe a day's worth, depending on how many straw back bodies you put into the planting, a day and a half at the most of manual labor is all that's really missing at this point when we have proper growing conditions. If any of you have questions, any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Commissioner?
No, no.
Okay. Ms. O'Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David, top of this photograph, if you look up here, this, I just noticed in your photograph, that's the bare earth that I mentioned in my report tonight, that I, I would like to see that covered with...
Yeah, the western side slope. It leads down into the mitigation area. Yeah, both photographs, one and two, show that area that needs to be either temporary seeding, or cereal rye, or some erosion control manning.
You think seeds would grow now? You think seeds would grow?
Temporary rye will grow anytime the temperature is above 55 degrees.
All right, so the commission was suggesting that in my report, that you act tonight to order it, not suggest it, what to order. That's one. And then the other is, today, like you said, David, the pipe looked okay today, but as I, in mind, the winter's coming, this is a low-lying area, and I am recommending that certain beefed-up protections around that inlet pipe, the new inlet pipe at the low area in the wetlands, that one that conveys the wetland water from the wet meadow into the pipe and under the regrow, that one, that it be beefed up. So that's what I put in mind. Today it looks okay, this second it looks okay, but the winter's coming, so.
That I think is probably more, I would say, just between the two, you keep that working up. I think, my own opinion of that, these two issues, I think that's just what you do, and Erin can work out, you know.
I would prefer that it's ordered, that needs to get, that needs to get new...
Okay, in that case, okay, well, okay, then we'll take that up. Mrs. San Viva, is there any other further information, anything like that you want to...
Well, I was just going to have Mrs. Plumb just stand for a moment, please, to just indicate exactly what we've represented. There isn't, there's no plan on either her part or her husband's to somehow ignore the Wetlands Commission or delay the process.
No, we have no, I don't speak in public very often. There's no intent on delaying anything. We wouldn't go this far, spend the kind of money that we've been spending on our representation here and not finish what we intended to do. That would be ludicrous on our part.
Could you give your first name for the record?
Sandra Plumb.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick, Mrs. Plumb, we've been sending things to David P. Plumb, both Benchmark Land and Mail, 1 Fox and Go to North Bramford, 06471. Is that the address where you received all communications?
Yes.
Okay. But you yourself might not be aware of anything, but it does go to him.
Yeah, we get all that, I get it all.
Okay. I get that. Did you have anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay, now we have members of the public, and we have a right to speak, but what the subject matter is, is the planning and the remediation, the planting issue and the remediation of the planet, other plantings, doesn't, if there's any, and so if anybody has, if there are members of the public who wish to be heard on that issue along, I would be happy to hear from you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we just went from pulling the permit, revoking the permit, to pulling the bond, to asking the public if they've got any opinion on...
It's a public hearing.
To talk about planting grass, or...
If, Scott, if they have anything, it's a public hearing. Okay, the public has the right to be heard, but, and, but it's heard on these issues. So does anybody have anything on this particular issue? Derek speaking?
Yes, sir. I'm for you.
John Letourneau, three-region court. Just to speak what came up a few minutes ago, the plantings. So what's going to be required, and I heard Mr. Lord say, some sort of, in that upland area that shows on the photograph in one of the reports, there's some bare, bare grass up there, that possibly grass seed could be planted. And there was another question, whether it would have taken or not. And his reply was, if it's, excuse me, 55 degrees, I believe it was, or higher, it'll take. I don't see where we're going to reach 55 degrees constantly over the next month. So I would, if something can be done temporarily, maybe with, with a hay spread of some sort, or straw spread of some sort, and I'm not an expert in that field, and then do the correct planting in the spring along with the other plantings. And as far as the plantings that have been done, you know, it's unfortunate that they did pay for quite a bit of it, and it couldn't be done. But I think for what's left, I mean, I'm hearing 90% of it has been done, and just a small fraction to be left for the spring. That's a lot different than if they came before you, or you had them come before you, and they only had 2% done. And they gave you a big excuse why, or whatever, that it couldn't be done. But here, they're coming in front of you, and it looked like, what my takeaway tonight, it's basically a communications. There's some, there was a breakdown of communication someplace. And that's not the first time that's been done with any commission. It's happened townwide for years. It's a mistake, it's a mistake, but I don't see where that's a cause to pull their permit or the bond. That's pretty drastic. That's really drastic. So I'm encouraging the commission to, you know, give them the benefit of the doubt. They came in front of you tonight, they brought their expert with you, and it's a shame it had to come to this, because the Plumbos are spending tens of thousands of dollars on this site. And every time Mr. San Viva comes, it costs them money. Every time Mr. Lord comes, it costs them money. And it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be. I mean, we're talking plantings. We're talking plantings, and it's going to be done. So let's, let's see if we can wrap this up and wait for maybe an early spring this year, hopefully, for good planting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, not on, not on the, on the, on the operation itself.
That's, that's not, that's outside the scope.
I understand that, I'm just saying.
You have to take that out of the...
That's what, yeah, that's, yeah, okay, you may have a correct cause, but it's, you know, we don't do operations, we do...
You won't find many places running an operation as good as they do.
Yeah, I saw the seven trains, seven cars off the other end going.
Yeah, well, go down to, I did, I trespassed down their property yesterday in Bramford. You went and seen an operation, sister, down in Bramford, right in the line down there. You think Ponce's fleet is beautiful and everything? Go check their work.
Okay, thank you.
What about the guy you drove?
Hi, my name's Nick Morrell. I just wanted to comment and agree with Mr. Letourneau's basic comments as well. I hope that the board understands that, you know, a huge capital investment isn't something that's easy regardless of the strength of the operation. And I hope that over some plantings, that the permit doesn't get revoked, and you give them their faith to present themselves as benefits, beneficiaries to this town. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Hi.
Could you clarify?
My name is Ken Daly, 594 North, um, I'm a former president of the Wolfland Land Trust, and I spent my career as manager of environmental compliance for Connecticut DOG. I am concerned that permit requirements appear to have been taken lightly, and that kind of undermines your office for showing up, and it often permits requirements where they're required. I have two questions. One, what is the classification of the resource below the affected area? Is it GA or GB to groundwater?
I don't know what's sound out there. Aaron, do you know?
He's referring to the, for the groundwater classification.
Yes.
I don't know.
Okay, I think we should know. I mean, I don't have to know now, but...
It's in a future watershed district.
I know.
A surface watershed.
In our very first meeting, we brought up water quality, because there was concerns about if the stuff was viable for pollution, and they brought up evidence that it was not. We talked about across the street, down through the farmland, and it has no impact. I was concerned about the reservoir down the street. They came back and said that it has no impact whatsoever on the, to the east.
And I know the land use itself is a wetland, so that has built-in risk too. But we have a company that's based elsewhere, outside of Wolfland, and we know that is a, type of land use, type of land use. And I would, I would hope that we would be more alert about the environmental stewardship that that piece of land goes for, I believe is, it's a GA water resource, groundwater I'd be interested to know what this fill materials were. I'm sorry, I've got MS on my speech, goes to hell. I think someone should look into, I hate to be a nanny, but if you are best management practices, that any company would benefit from reviewing for environmental stewardship of land that is borderline intensive load land use. As a former compliance officer, most best management practices, not only help the status of the environment that we're all steward of, they can make your operation more efficient economically too. And I would, I would suggest that the environmental planner, if I can say so, take a look at the areas strategies available and attach them to any permit amendment that would remind this landlord of his duty for that property. I don't, I'm not one to throw away concerns if the act of first GB instead of GA. GB to me means threatened, and you have to take special care of it. GA is even higher than that, but GB is a throwaway area. And that's why you guys be being there to help protect it. I'm just asking you that you take your requirements seriously and take her concerns seriously. It's too easy to go along, to get along. And if Aaron raised an alarm, it's because that alarm is justified. And I respect attorneys, I've dealt with them all my life. They sometimes become apologists when things don't work out right, and they don't always offer up the most obvious solutions to problems. Revoking the permit is, to me, is a legitimate lesson for all property owners to be aware of. I don't, I don't see this damage as permit or mortal, but I appreciate that the town planning has raised it to you guys, because your job, even though you don't pay for it, is something that the town appreciates, and you need to be taken seriously when you raise it alarm. I have nothing against this company or the land use or whatever, but I just think the time has come for us to take very seriously the resources that we reside above. As a former compliance official, you know, I've been to hell and back. All those salt sheds you see all around the state will haunt my beard. And I participate in a lot of violations to build, but I'm proud of them anyway. And I would like this company to be proud of how it responded to this semi-emergency. So I'm here to, you know, trust you, but to appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone further?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out, Mr. Daly, and first, you members know that, I think the good point is that how serious the commission does take all of these applications that are before them, as part of your decision, when they made the decision back in June of 2019, one of the conditions of approval was the, was based upon a memorandum filed by the engineering department, the engineering office of the water and sewer division. So you've got three pages of criteria that have been established as part of the overall approval. And my client takes them seriously. Otherwise, they wouldn't, you know, be spending the kind of money and time to get this done correctly. Thank you.
At this point, we have to come to a resolution, which I think we can do in the form of a motion. And I had the, we had the motion written up, but now Aaron needs to modify it a little bit. And the basis of the motion is, if you look at your, it's found on the bottom of page two, and recommendation that the IWWC should order installation of planting plan to be completed before May 20, 2020, and the IAWCA should further stipulate should this not occur, the IWWC may act to call the bond at its June meeting. Now, Aaron, as, let's keep on changing, as a result of going off the office, sorry, the five o'clock had somewhat slow information that she wanted to put into the, as proposed motion, so that, do you want to, can you put those in now?
Sure, you can make, you can take more than one vote, but...
I think we can do this. Okay.
Or you can put it all together. The other was a paragraph above that, so the site investigation I went out today, and this, it was too dark to take pictures, but this is what data board has, so many of these photographs show the area. Doesn't show the inlet pipe, but closely, but, so I had some concerns about, not so much today, but over the winter. Winter can ravage a site, especially a new site like this that hasn't had a chance to get established. So I, so I would like the commission to order the permittee slash violator to add these extra erosion controls that I list here. So you read them. I can read them. Do you want me to read them? Regarding the recently installed pipe located in depression, which functions to convey wetland flows to the drainage system, stone, two-inch stone should be installed around the pipe opening and on the sides of the pipe, and additional hay bales installed in front of the pipe inlet, again, for the winter. Not so much for today, but to get us through to the spring. Regarding the unprotected, unseated earthen slope located on the north side of the small red building that shows in the picture here, a thick layer of straw mulch should be ordered to be installed. If you also want to add rye seed, I don't know when rye seed stops growing.
It actually grows, it'll, it won't grow above ground, but it grows, it sprouts seed even under the snow. We use it as a ground cover in the winter.
It's actually 45 degrees, not 55 degrees, as long as the temperature is above 45.
So can we do both? Can you do the seed and the mulch on top of the seed?
Yeah, it can be done.
Okay, so then to amend that to say, and rye seed. The player straw should be ordered to be installed over rye seed, over winter rye seed. Over winter rye, over winter rye seed.
Okay. Now, at this point, any further discussion from the commissioner?
Is that her only recommendation?
No, it's true. Okay, what we're going to do, what we're, what we're proposed is that if you go after that on this paragraph, what, attorney small has a pine, okay, the motion is, the IWWC will order the installation of the planting plan to be completed on or about before May 20th, 2020th, and the IWWC should further stipulate that if this does not occur, the IWWC may act to call the bond at its June meeting.
And I would suggest you add on the erosion things into that.
And erosion, and we're going to, and the motion will then, and also are ordered...
Immediately.
Okay, okay, I keep, okay.
Yeah, we have to put a date on it, to be specific. We can't just say, you know, before the winter, because that's not...
We're not doing, okay, but this needs to be, okay, then I think we're going to do two motions, because this is going to have one date and this is going to have another date.
Thank you. And then in answer to what I think Commissioner Kern was driving at is that, are we going to do, yes, we would do separately, after we do that, we do the land records one, which is the first paragraph there.
No, okay, okay, let's get these two things, and then we can talk about land records first, okay. So on that, on the, okay.
Go ahead, I'll wait for you. I just have one more question for that. Is there any more development or disturbance of the soils on that site between now and spring? Is it dormant for the rest of, until spring?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We're not, we're P and Z until December 13th, maybe? So we have a mild winter, you can start, we can break around Christmas. That's what I'm asking about. Is there going to be more disturbance on the site between now and spring? We're talking about... No, I understand. It's a good question. And I, you don't know whether the plans are to start between now and spring.
Oh, God. Right now, there's, no.
Couldn't happen, funny you ask me.
Whatever. Okay. Okay, on that, may I, okay, entertain a motion regarding the IWWC action as shown as the last paragraph of the recommendations. Do I have a motion?
So, just from here on?
Yeah.
From here on, okay. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that the inland wetland water course commission should order the installation of the planting plan to be completed on or before May 20th, 2020, and the inland wetland water course commission should further stipulate that should this not occur by that time, the commission may act to call the bond at its June meeting.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Further discussion on the motion?
Yes, I'm going to ask that you take a few of those words out, where you say the commission should, so just, that should this not occur.
That should this not occur.
Right. Could you just rephrase it as if you were saying it rather than me? If I say the commission should, you are ordering it. That, so the motion is that you order installation and that...
Okay, okay.
That, all right. And we stip, or, and stipulate, you just say and stipulate.
I'll revise that motion. The inland wetland water course commission shall order installation of the planting to be completed on or before May 20th, 2020, and the commission further stipulates that should this not occur, the commission may act to call the bond at its June meeting.
Second.
Okay.
Call or vote, Mike?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we'll entertain a motion regarding the two actions requested in the fourth paragraph of the environmental planners' report dated October 8, November 1st, 2009. And we need a date on that.
2019. What would be the date for the winter, for the winter rye, Aaron?
Within...
Two weeks.
They're chatting about two weeks. I'm going to defer to David.
Two weeks?
Within two weeks, could this be done, you think?
Yeah.
So would that...
Could this be done within two weeks? Two weeks, so...
1814, Council, 32nd of November.
December 1st, how about December 1st?
Agree?
Okay, December 1st.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the permittee be required to order, to install pipe located in the depression, install two-inch stone around the pipe opening on all sides of the pipe, and additional hay bales installed around the, in front of the pipe inlet. In addition, the, the unprotected, unseated earthen slopes to the north side of the small red building be seeded with winter rye and a thick layer of straw mulch added.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
By December 1st?
Mr. Kern first.
Did you say by December?
Mr. Caruso is the second.
By December 1st. Did you say that? If I didn't, can I add it?
Well, let's say, stay, and we...
Well, let's say, stay, can we restate? Okay. We're going to restate the one.
Okay.
Okay, the motion is regarding the installed pipe in the depression, that two-inch stone be installed around the pipe opening on all sides of the pipe, and additional hay bales be installed in front of the pipe outlet. And on the unprotected earthen slope located on the north side of the small building, be seeded with winter rye and a thick layer of straw mulch to be added by December 1st.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Call for a vote, Aileen?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Mike, yes, yes. Well, now, the next issue is, as we're getting there, is on the placing of the notice violation on land records. That is going to, now, my understanding, that's going to be done.
Oh, the attorney, attorney Small had no problem with it. She, she helped me frame this paragraph as to how, what she wants, would like the commission to say when they do that. They just don't say, we're putting it, you guys, the commission just doesn't say, we're going to put it on the land records. You tell, you expound as to why you're going to put it on the land records. You give it basis, you give it weight, or you give it rationale, the rationale.
Okay, and so this is the rationale to do it. Okay, now, this is done, can we do this by a motion, or?
Can't do it tonight.
What? She said that we should do it tonight.
That's not in your special meeting notes.
She said we should do it tonight.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we hold off and do this on the May, the, the June meeting. If the so inclined work hasn't been done by June 1st, then we'll hammer down with the, on the land records, and also start to close bonds.
Okay.
There's, okay, there's, you know, let's do it all at once. There's been a lot of communication here until tonight. Now we think, got things organized and straightened out. Does that all right with you?
I think that makes sense.
You need that in the main, in a way of a motion, Aaron?
No, but we, we do need to set the violation remains in effect.
No, I'm sorry, I, I spoke too soon. At the November 6th meeting, you ordered it to be put on the land records.
Right.
So, if you, she wanted it reaffirmed with stronger language and the rationale. If you don't want it to be on the land records, maybe you should move, make a motion that we, you do not want it to appear on the land records at this time, or something to that effect. I, I wish she was here to help me more days.
I make a motion that we hold off on the land records until, what I just said, until June 1st. And good faith that they'll have everything planted and done as they said tonight that they would have. So, I would like to make a motion that we hold off on that, and if somebody wants to second it, so send it up.
Hold off on the placement of violation on the land records?
Yes.
Which we're talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that, yes, good, yes.
And we have a second on the motion, right?
He woke up.
Notice of violation on land placement, clearance of violation.
Hold off on the placement of the notice violation on the land records until, until.
And so the.
The June.
June, June meeting. Yeah, our June meeting.
Till the June.
June 2020 meeting?
Sure, yes.
Mr. Caruso, a secondor?
Yes.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, I would personally like to put the motion, I would like to put the thing out. However, I'm relying on good faith of the applicants and the good faith of Attorney Sanabiba, whom I have great respect for. And so I would, I will vote for in favor of the motion. Call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you. And that case, I'd like to thank everybody for coming in, and we get helpful testimony. And I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Do I have discussion on it? All, all those in favor?
I have a time on the.
I've got.
The time is 8:14. Thank you.